So it is 5:37. I'll call the meeting to order. Welcome to the School Committee Workshop of October 15th, 2025. This meeting will be conducted remotely. Attendance by committee members will be remote and remote attendance shall count towards quorum. This meeting is open to the public, but there will not be a public comment period. This meeting is being broadcast by ECAT. I will ask for roll call to confirm quorum. Jim? Kelly?
Present.
Okay, we're waiting for Lauren and I am here. So we have a quorum, so we will get started. The first item on the agenda is the policy on the middle school pathway exploration policy. It's a first reading. So this is a new policy that we are required by Desi to adopt. Mrs. Pruitt has been working on this with our legal counsel. It will be policy I N in our policy manual. Mrs. Pruitt?
Thank you so much. So this is a new policy. There are some new regulations that have been put out according to general law, mass general law around ensuring that all of our students have access to middle school, middle school pathway exploration policies or exploration practices. And this is, this policy is designed to be, it was a model policy that was provided with some regulations that are asked to be included. We did, a lot of my colleagues have been sending these across our listservs to see what language is being used because the exact language was not provided to us by Desi, nor was there any suggested language from MASC yet. So however, this does need to be put into or be submitted to Desi by November 1st. So this, we are asking for your first read of this policy.
Thank you. So do any committee members have any questions about this policy? Or any questions about this requirement or any comments on the wording? Okay, great. So I just wanted to ask a question. So on the information sharing, so how exactly does the opt-out work?
Sure. So already Mr. Carroll has sent out communication to families. That needed to go out actually by October, the first week in October, which he has done. We were able to do that without a policy in place. Every year we do get requests from the vocational, from southeastern vocational school for information to provide to families and we do share that information. This clause that's added in is a specific opt-out clause so that families can opt out of us sharing their information. And in order to do that, they need to submit that in writing. So Mr. Carroll has issued that and we'll do, and we'll proceed to do that each year on October 1st. And they have until October 15th to opt out of the data sharing.
Thank you. That's, that's very helpful. I love how there are school tours involved in this. I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, and it's important to note too that the school tours will be at the expense of the vocational schools. They will not be at the expense of the Easton Public Schools out of our operating budget. So if any transportation costs do arise, they will be providing that. That is part of the regulations.
Yes, I love that too.
And this is for our part, who we partner with. We are part of the, sorry, the the programs in southeastern regional vocational technical high school, just wanted to make sure I got the exact name correct, and the Bristol County Agricultural High School. So those two high schools are the ones that we collaborate with here in Easton.
Great. So we are going to have the second read for this and the vote on October 23rd. So if committee members have any further questions, feel free to bring those to the next meeting. Okay, so I'm going to move on to the next item, which is discussion possible, possible vote on school committee policies. I seem to be tripping over my words tonight. Okay, so the first one, we're going to just go over the policies first that have a second read and a possible vote. So we have IMG A, animal assisted therapy. If you remember, this was revised by Director Davidson and the Committee on Animal Assisted Therapy. So do I have any questions or comments on the edits that were made? Okay, then I will, I'll take a motion to approve policy IMG A, animal assisted therapy.
So moved first, you?
Second?
Second, Loomis.
Okay, so I'm going to go through a roll call vote and this is the roll call vote we'll use for anything we need to vote for. Hamilton?
Yes.
Persio?
Yes.
Loomis?
Yes.
And Wiseman, yes. Thank you. The next item that is a second read and a vote, possible vote is KJA, relations with booster organizations. So if you remember, I, the last two paragraphs and the legal references were added to this policy. Any questions or comments on the additions in the policy in general? Okay, then I will take a motion to approve policy KJA, relations with booster organizations.
So moved, Loomis.
Do I have a second?
Second, Hamilton.
Roll call vote?
Hamilton, yes.
Persio, yes. Loomis, yes.
Wiseman, yes. Thank you. The next for a second read and potential vote is policy LBC, relations with non-public schools. If you remember, we added steps for approval of private schools per MASC sample policy. Any questions or comments on this policy or the additions? Okay, I will take a motion to approve policy LBC, relations with non-public schools.
So moved, Loomis.
Do I have a second?
Persio, second.
Roll call vote?
Hamilton, yes.
Persio, yes. Loomis, yes.
Wiseman, yes. Thank you. The next policy for a second read and potential vote is LDA, student teaching and internships. If you remember, we just deleted one sentence to this that was not our practice. So is there any questions or comments on this policy? All right, I'll take a motion to approve policy LDA, student teaching and internships.
So moved, Loomis.
Do I have a second?
Persio, second.
Roll call vote?
Hamilton, yes.
Persio, yes. Loomis, yes.
Wiseman, yes. Thank you. Okay, so the next group of policies are first readings. So we won't be voting on them tonight. We'll be voting on them at, in a future meeting. So the first one is KF, community use of school facilities. You can see there have been substantial edits to this policy. Director Kopas and Dr. Cabral worked on this. So please let me know if you have any questions or comments on this revised policy.
I have just a basic question.
Go ahead.
Um, so when I read through it, it looks like the step one is contact the facility.
I'm sorry, Kelly, I can't, I can't hear what you're saying.
Yeah, sorry. I think there was something in the background. Okay, so um, the first one, the first comment says contact the facility to see if it's available for use on the desired date for athletic facilities. Contact the athletic department. So are we, I thought they were scheduling it through something or are they like calling each of these groups to book it first? I think I misunderstood the process.
No, they are booking it themselves, but they're just checking with the school first. We're trying to get it to a point where everybody, everybody meaning school staff, including the athletic department, front loads everything that's a school activity, like for the whole year if they can. But we're having them just check with the school first because there might be something that they need to add. And what we don't want to do is bump somebody for a school function. But the school gets first priority. So we're trying to manage that sort of expectation for people. They always contacted the school first, so this is sort of our continuation of that until everybody's fluent with the program. If that makes sense.
Okay.
Does that make sense, Kelly?
I think so. I just, I've heard some feedback from community groups that they're not always sure like who to call and they leave a message and they don't hear back. And so I don't know, like, do we want them to email the associated party? Do we want them to like place a phone call? Do we want to be like slightly more?
They should be getting a response regardless. And if they're not, if they let us know, we can make sure that they're answering. Especially like if we can find out, like if people let us know when that happens, if it's always maybe the same school or the same department or the same person, we can course correct. Otherwise, otherwise we don't, we don't know. If it's across the board, then we have to come up with a system.
Okay. It just felt, I guess it seemed a little, I wouldn't want somebody to open this up and then feel lost still. Like just if I'm with another, I'm with a theater group, do I know who the PAC manager is? Like, how do I find that person? Is it on our?
It is, but the contact information should also be on here.
Okay. We don't. Maybe that's the course correction is like just to make it clear on how to do it.
We try to put positions instead of people because people change. Yeah. But maybe, actually, maybe instead of that, it could be where to find the information.
Yeah, or it could even be like download and review the facilities use memo dated their contact information for these is included in the facilities use memo. So then if you change the order of those two.
Yeah. Excuse me. So that if it's not in the policy, but it's in the guidance, we can change the guidance quickly. Gotcha.
Yeah, exactly. I just was thinking, we want people to schedule. We want this revenue stream. We want the community to use it. We want to engage people. So yeah.
Um, people, I think people have been doing this. They've been contacting the appropriate person and then doing it. But like I said, if, if there's a breakdown on that, if they could let us know so we can fix it on our end, that would be good. And Lynn can make sure that Tony is aware of that.
Jim, you have a question?
Could it just be as simple as like an email distro with a few different people and it says, reach out here to check if the facility is available or something like that rather than, feels like a lot of extra steps to find the contact info. And it's probably better if people just get an email than a phone call.
Yes, but I think unless I'm hearing wrong, I think we're going to put where, like what website to go to to get the contact info. Because we can change the website like instantaneously. If we have a different person in a particular role or their email or the phone number changes, we have to go through two readings of the school committee to change it.
I guess I just, it would be called like events@easton.k12.us or something like, and then the people behind the scenes could change who get that email.
You mean a new email?
Yeah.
Uh, yes, but it is an additional email that people have to check.
I agree with Jim. I think it's cumbersome trying to know who you need to contact. I
The only, if somebody, that means every principal and AD will have to check that email regularly. Cause it won't go just to the school of the person.
Well.
Where the events.
I, I, I think that this, we're doing it this way as a as a, like a substitute for a like staffing issue. Because it sounds like something like this should go to the facilities department and then they disseminate.
Well, it goes to the school first because the school may not be aware, the school may not have added something to the calendar. And they have to have the opportunity to tell the person, yeah, we need that space.
But what if it's an organization that needs a stage for something like it's a theater group, say. And they could go to OA, they could go to the middle school, they could even do Blanche, like they don't care. And so do they have to contact each of the schools?
Well, they, so the way it's working right now is that they go on the, not school dude. They go on the platform. It's, no, it's a brightly, they go on brightly. And you can see if there is, let me, give me an opportunity to talk to Tony about that because right now they can go on brightly and see if it's open. Right? And so it's just a matter of calling the school and saying, I want to use it for this. It looks like it's open. Is it everything okay? And then the school says yes or no or whatever. What the schools are afraid of is somebody points out a date and they go, oh shucks, we didn't put in graduation rehearsal or something like that. And then somebody gets bumped for a school event. We're just trying to avoid that. But um.
So if somebody goes on brightly, they'll see like all these three stages are available on the date I want. And then they would pick which stage they wanted on brightly and put in their request to rent the stage on that date. Is that correct?
Yes. And they're supposed to just go into brightly and do it. But the problem right now that we don't know if brightly can fix is if the school has something in there like track meet, so they're using the stadium or whatever. A person, we didn't know that this was possible, but it, we are realizing now that it is until we can find a fix with brightly. They can go in and overwrite that. They shouldn't and they're not supposed to. And if in a perfect world, they wouldn't and they would just see that it's taken and so they would move along. But right now they can do that. So this just might be an issue until we can get the technology fixed, but we have to get this out. So I'm not sure. I would like to talk to Tony to figure out how we can come up with a better step line.
Okay, that's, that's fine. Well, when we have our next meeting, we'll go over policies. We can go over whatever changes you and Tony have discussed and committee members can ask whatever questions they want as well. Does that sound okay with everyone? Okay, great. So we will move on then. We're moving on to policy section I. So we have, I'm sorry, go ahead, Kelly.
I had one other comment on this.
Oh, sure. Go ahead.
Before we, and then while yours is with Tony. So the other thing that I noticed on here is that we say that things cannot be scheduled more than six months in advance. I know that there are groups like Dance Studios that try to finish a recital and then book the same date the following year. If we can't do till six months in advance, then they can't confirm that until, if it's like that May, June window and there's lots of Saturday events, they wouldn't be confirming that until like December, January. I don't know if for those like bigger, longer investments or people are going to use it repeatedly. If there's an opportunity for us to schedule sooner or not, but I just, while you're talking things over with Tony, I thought I'd throw it out there. I was under the impression from talking to someone who does this that like some of the other districts are allowing them to schedule in like September, October. So I just wouldn't want to lose someone saying, oh, I can't answer for me. Therefore I must use like Stoughton High School instead. So I just wanted to throw that out there. I could be wrong. That could be like hearsay when they say that, but Stoughton does the same thing we do. I have no idea. I'm just.
Oh, we, we did actually discuss this at length. This was actually at the urging of the AD and the principals. Because basically the same situation is what we just discussed. They are very much afraid, especially athletics with playoffs and things of that nature. They don't know until closer to the event and they just want to be able. The, the feedback we got from our staff is they're really concerned that people can sign up for the facilities on their own. And so that's what we're trying to sort of get over or get past or find a way that it will work for them to do that. Because at the risk of repeating myself, they just want to be able to reserve their items first so that they aren't taken by people and then those people have to get bumped. So we're just trying to like problem solve that issue right now. I believe that as we do this for a year or two, our own staff will get better at pre-populating those things. But right now they're a little nervous about it. But we definitely had a conversation at length. It actually was three months first and we extended it to six months for that reason. And I believe some of this we will also be improving through trial and error, honestly. Okay. But I, I wrote that down as well for Tony. I mean.
Okay. Yep. I just, I'm concerned about losing out on some of those big events that make a big commitment with us.
Totally hear you. Yep. And that, that might happen and that might even happen with our new fees.
Right. So I would want to make it as easy as possible to not lose them if we could.
So I get it. I think it's worse if we bump them, then they'll really be mad. Cause if you have a date and you publicize it and then you get bumped, that's a big problem. So we just have to get our staff maybe a little bit more proficient in, in planning as far in the future as they can.
Okay, ready to move on? Okay, so policy ID is school day. We just added with Mrs. Pruitt's suggestion. We added some language at the end of the first paragraph, just to make sure to, in, to refer to the time on learning requirement. Does anyone have any questions about that or comments? Okay. IHB, special instructional programs and accommodations programs for children with special needs. So there's only one change on this. If you see in the second paragraph, the second to last sentence, the, the age in there was 21 and it needed to be changed to 22. That's the only change. Questions, comments? IHBF, homebound instruction. So there were some edits made by Director Davidson in this policy. Does anyone have any questions or comments on that? Okay. IHBG-R, homeschool policy guidelines. So this is a first reading to delete. These are regulations that just, they don't need to be in our manual. Any questions or comments about that? Okay.
Jackie, sorry.
Oh, go ahead. I'm sorry. Kelly?
Jim, Jim, go first.
Yeah.
Just from my own learning, can I ask why they shouldn't be in our policy book?
So what we're trying to do is things that don't need to be in our policy like regulations, sometimes exhibits, information that's maybe contained on the website. We're, we're trying to weed that out of our policy manual. And Mrs. Pruitt, I don't know if you want to discuss this at all?
I, I apologize. I don't remember making a recommendation to delete this.
Okay. Cause the homeschool policy guidelines, where are those generally kept? Those are usually with your office?
They, yes, but there is, each, each school district does have a homeschool policy as far as specific guidelines. They can be varied, varied a little bit.
I'm sorry. Can I just interrupt for one second?
Yes.
You're on IHBF?
No, IHBG.
Okay, with IHBG-R.
R.
Okay, sorry, mine aren't in order. I'm just trying to catch up. Okay.
I'm just wondering if, yeah, the, the way that they're listed here in, in the Google Drive is, is just alphabetical, not by policy alphabetical. So I just wonder what IHBG is. Maybe that's why we recommend it to.
IH, oh, IHBG, where is, hold on, I can tell you.
That's homebound instruction.
Oh, that's homebound.
Yeah.
I think, right?
Yes.
So that's IHBF. So I wonder where.
So IHBG, IH, this is what, IHBG-R. So IHBG just is homeschooling. Let me get to that.
Yeah, I think that's why we recommend, that's what it is. Guidelines because the policy is in place.
Yeah, so IHBG is homeschooling and this goes over pretty much everything that you would need to know to do this.
Right. That's, thank you.
You didn't have, you know, we just had some minor clerical corrections to that. So there wasn't anything that could be brought to, to you guys. But I think that's a, that's a good question because you wouldn't know that because you didn't have the policy.
I was only asking in case that was like the state does this, so we don't have to have. So sorry, I didn't mean to cause.
No, no, don't. Every question's appreciated. Kelly, did you have something?
I had a similar question. So I was trying to understand where they resided, if not here, but it looks like we cleared that up.
Okay, great. Thank you. IHCA, summer school. So there was just one change. Mrs. Pruitt suggested to take out that last sentence of the first paragraph because that isn't our actual program anymore. Any questions or comments on that? Okay. So IIB, class size. Again, one minor edit, the last paragraph, the last sentence. This was a surprise to us all reviewing this because we have never had any input on class size decisions, nor should we. It's really not in our lane. So we took that out. Any questions or comments about that? Okay. IJK, supplementary materials selection and adoption. So this is a first reading to delete. Mrs. Pruitt advised us that this is not our actual practice anymore. And so recommends that we delete this. I don't know if Mrs. Pruitt, you want to add anything?
No, I just think that we, we continue to get guidance from Desi on high quality instructional materials and how to purchase or look at them. And I think that this, like, like Jackie said, this is not how we actually operate right now. So I don't think it's necessary.
Thank you. Any questions or comments on this? Okay. So the next policy is IJL, library materials. This was revised by Mrs. Pruitt as well, just to make sure that we, that the policy mirrored what we are actually doing in practice now. Mrs. Pruitt, is there anything you want to add to that?
No.
Any questions or comments from committee members? Okay. IJM, special interest materials selection and adoption. This was minor revisions by Mrs. Pruitt. Questions, comments? Okay. IJNDC-R, website guidelines and procedures for approval. This is a first reading to delete this. It doesn't need to be in our policy manual. It, these kinds of procedures and guidelines are on, on the district website. And because they could change, you know, Mrs. Ramos obviously, you know, reviewed this and, and takes care of all that information on our website. It just doesn't really make a lot of sense to have it in our policy manual as things are changing so fast. Any questions or comments? Okay. IJNDE, bring your own device technology policy and agreement. So Director Ramos reviewed this as well and made some minor revisions. Any questions or comments on this? Okay. And if I move on too fast, oh, go ahead, Kelly.
So I just want to understand this for a moment in the context of the fact that we moved to the carts for younger ages. So as people ask questions about the carts for younger ages, as we're effectively saying that if the agreement is signed, a parent could choose to send their child to school with a Chromebook that they use instead of the one on the cart. Is that right? Am I interpreting this correctly? Is that right? Am I interpreting this correctly?
Based on our current policy, that is correct.
Okay.
And could it be a iPad or a Mac as well?
Yes.
Not just like a PC?
Yeah, it's a bring your own device, um, policy.
So we have, um, the cell phone use consideration, right? Where cell phones get checked into, in many classrooms into like a holder of some sort and they cannot use them during that period. This acknowledges that a cell phone could be used for those tasks and would have people signing their own, bring your own device because we have cell phones listed on here.
In that, in classrooms, teachers can have students use a device and have done that for things like, like a Kajit or like a classroom survey, something like that.
Like a Kahoot. Yeah. Okay. So, um.
Yeah, different, lot of different ones.
Okay. So if a student said, I'm bringing an iPad to use it for note taking purposes and they use this bring your own device policy, we would not have a concern. That would be different than the cell phone policy of being checked.
Yes, the, well, the cell phone policy in the handbooks says that they can only use it for a teacher directed activity.
Yep. But the iPad gets gray. Like, I just want to take a moment on this because an iPad, you can still get text messages and things like that from, right? So it's like the hybrid between the, um, cell phone and the, uh, computer and you can take notes on an iPad and do all of that. So.
Well, not even in a MacBook, you can get text messages on it as well.
Yes. Good point. Okay. All right. So, um, so it just remains that teacher discussion for the use and that's what's in the handbook. And this is just the ability to use it.
Yes, if you want them to continue to have this, yes. The handbook is created from the policy.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Jim, go ahead.
It's maybe too nitpicky, but I feel like the number, it lists the types of personal devices. And I feel like the number of devices is rapidly, uh, expanding. So I don't know if it's worth including, but not limited to, or, I mean, watches, the meta, the new classes that are coming out have texts that you can read right in your eyes. I mean.
So we could do the under devices, personal portable wireless devices, including but not limited to. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Just make it more generic, like anything that can connect to the internet. I don't know. I'm just throwing out ideas, but.
It's, that's no problem to add that.
I know. I'm thinking iPods are in there and that's not really, that's very archaic these days, right?
We could take iPods out.
Who would have thought of that?
And may- maybe that's just
And I'm going to take out.
Future proofing this. If you just say internet connected devices or devices that can connect to the internet. I don't know.
Portable wireless devices connected to the internet? Is that what you're suggesting?
If everyone, unless the people have other loopholes you can think of with what I'm saying, but.
Not yet, but I'm sure we'll find them and change it appropriately.
Well, the other thing too is in saying portable wireless devices that connect to the internet, that, right? I mean, some, just, it's the cloud. It's the, I guess it's the internet, right? But they don't necessarily need, like a phone, you don't need a wireless router to, to utilize the.
Can, so can we just say personal portable wireless devices will be allowed? Does that make more, does that make sense to everyone without doing any specifics?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I J N D E. Okay. That was easy enough. Can do that. Um, I, any other questions before I move on or comments? Okay. I J O C, school volunteers. There's just some minor edits to clean up the language. Any questions or comments on this? Very odd that we specified senior citizens in this. I'm not sure why, but.
I was actually going to say, I was curious why to take it out, but it's, I guess it is odd that it's even in there.
Yeah, it just should be anyone. All right. Um, I K E, promotion and retention of students. Again, there was just some minor language changes. Any comments or questions? Okay.
Can I go back to school volunteers for a second?
Sure.
Do you think senior citizens are on there because senior citizens can get a, um, can volunteer to get a tax rebate?
No, because this, this, this po- I mean, my guess is this policy goes way back. So I think it was before.
I mean, that's not a new thing, but.
I, I think that that is, that's a town issued policy and it would make me nervous to tie in anything like that.
Okay.
From the town because they could change whatever they want. Um, this, I think, leaves it open for anyone who wants to volunteer. This covers.
And other community volunteers. Okay.
Yeah. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Sorry, I missed that.
No, don't. That's fine. Um, where was I? Um, did we, I K E, nobody had comments. Okay. I L B A, district program assessments. Mrs. Pruitt revised this. Any questions or comments? Okay. I M B, teaching about controversial issues and controversial speakers. Uh, Mrs. Perez just, um, revised this slightly. Any questions or comments? Okay. Are we okay to?
Oh.
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Kelly.
Um, a little confused by the framing of the first line.
Me too.
Um, so it's, you know, must relate directly to the objectives and content of courses approved. It, it almost implies to me that we are approving the content of a course. We're just approving a course description. We're not approving like every content detail. So I just don't know if there's a better way to state that. But that part was a little confusing to me. I, I don't know if it read that way to anyone else, but it just, on reading, as I looked at it again, it sort of implied to me that we were approving the content of the course, like every.
This is on number one?
Yeah.
Okay. So it says controversial issues selected by teachers for classroom discussion must relate directly to the objectives and content of courses.
I think it's meant to mean that the courses are approved.
Yeah.
But it implies to me that the content is improved and we just get like a high level description, like we don't approve the.
So do we even need the last part of that sentence? I don't know. Dr. Cabral, Mrs. Pruitt, what do you think?
I, if, if you were to leave the approved by the school committee for inclusion in the curriculum, I would say controversial issues selected by teachers or classroom discussions must relate to the courses approved. But if it's objectives and content of courses, then I would, that's probably why that was not initially there.
Okay. So we can take out that, that, the part that's in bold and italicized, if that makes.
I would almost say as a line to the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks.
Okay. So let's see. Hold on. So controversial issues selected by teachers for classroom discussion must relate directly to the objective, objectives and content of courses.
As related to the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks.
As related to the Massachusetts.
In relation to the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks.
In rel- in relation to the Massachusetts curriculum frameworks. What do people think about that? Does that clarify it a little more? Lauren, Kelly?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments on this policy? Okay, great. Are we okay to continue for a little bit? Okay, nobody's shutting off, so I'm going to keep going.
So I'm going to confirm I'm not going to be going tonight, but if I have to just.
Okay. Um, so policy section A, again, these are first reads. So A D, vision, theory of action and core values. This was revised to, um, actually add, Nancy, what do we do? We added the theory of action as well as change the vision? Or did we have the theory of action there?
Um, I believe the theory of action was already there. We put in the vision and the core values. So.
Okay.
So it will have to be updated every time the vision changes.
Unfortunately, yeah. Um, everyone good with this? Okay. So A D D A dash R, D C J I S model query policies. So this again is just a restatement of the regulations. Um, we don't need this in our manual. This is a first read to delete. Um, let me look at, hold on, let me grab A D D. You knew how much paper I have in my office.
It appears that the dash Rs tend to be, if I can make an inference, the dash Rs are all like extensions of what the policy are.
Yep. So we have a policy A D D A, which is the, basically the policy on criminal background checks. And Christina is reviewing that right now. So we already have a policy on this. This is just a restatement of the regulations. So are there any, um, questions or comments on this? Okay. A D F wellness guidelines. So the wellness guidelines were very thoroughly revised, um, already by, um, Colleen Clark and her team, thankfully. Um, however, there is a policy called, um, a meal modification policy. Um, and what this, and this is required to be part of our policy manual and it just was never incorporated. So the additions in the wellness guidelines, you can see whatever is underlined, um, under section J, um, is basically all of the language in the meal modification policy that's being added. The one thing I didn't know is under section J four, it says a meal modification request form is avail- available from, I have central office address, but I didn't know if there was a specific office that I should be adding to this, offices of assistant superintendent, something like that, or is there anything in particular?
Um, right now, the director of finance.
Director of finance? Okay.
But again, I wonder if we need to include that in case.
Okay.
Those, those, um, responsibilities shift at any time.
So we could just say you can get it from central office?
Mm-hmm. That, that would be my recommendation. I don't know what everybody else thinks. What do you, what do you call it, Jim? Futurist? Futurizing it?
Future proofing. Yeah.
Um, does anyone have any questions about this? Okay. So we'll make that change. Um, okay, we can start with B. I'll go as long as you guys are willing to go. And whenever you want to quit, just raise a hand. I could go all night to get through this stuff. So could Nancy, I'm sure. Okay.
I could not.
It's so fun though.
A hungry herd will ask for me.
But we are not going to be late. Yeah, just let me know when you want to quit. Uh, B B B A, B B B B. School committee member qualifications oath of office. So this was just, um, revised in a minor way, just to, it edited to really put into the policy what we actually do. Um, it wasn't, it wasn't right before. So, um, that's all this is. Does anyone have any questions or comments on this?
This is B B A A?
B B B A slash B B B B. Thank you, M A S C. Okay. B D D, school committee superintendent relationship. So the only, um, the only additions we had now were some language that actually a legal counsel had suggested that we add, um, to allow for urgent circumstances. So that's, that's the language that we've added. There any questions or comments about that? Concerns, anything? Okay. B D E, subcommittees of the school committee. Um, uh, this was just edited because number two is not something we do. It's not our practice. So we just took out that requirement. It, you know, it makes much more sense when you have a subcommittee to let the subcommittee decide who's going to be chair. Questions or comments? Okay. Okay, so here's the fun one. B D F A, B D F A E one, B D F A E two, and B D F A E three. So these were three different policies in our policy manual. We were trying to figure out how to combine them and luckily M A S C did it for us. So what is so, sorry. So B D F A and B D F A E two are now combined in one policy. So I apologize if this is a little confusing. Instead of just crossing out and adding stuff into the policy, I just did kind of a new draft and then noted on the old drafts that they were to be deleted. So, um, I don't know if you have any questions on that. So the first B D F A is school councils. So it goes over school councils and, um, the school improvement plans for the school councils. Questions, comments? Okay, so then B D F A E one and B, no, so yes, B D F A E one and B D F A E three are combined. So those go over the school improvement plan. So now those, I did the same thing. I just did a new draft. I had some edits in there so you could specifically see some changes to the policy overall. And then other than that, they're combined. So, um, the, if the second paragraph, the underlined part, that's to be, um, that's pursuant to the law. So I made sure to put in the right date. It wasn't in there before. Questions or comments on this one? Nancy, these were fun, huh? Okay. So think about it. You can always ask me questions next time.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, it's kind of just a general question. Um, perhaps it's not part of the law, um, for school councils to do, um, school councils per the law to do, to work on school improvement plans. But is it, um, part of the law also for them to work on school handbooks? And, because I think they do, or do they not? Does anyone know?
Without going through this policy again, I, if it's not in this policy, it's not. Um.
So it's not the law, but it's okay if they do?
Yeah, I mean, I, I would imagine the principal has discretion to have the school councils work on what he or she wants them to work on.
Okay.
Yeah. And Mrs. Pruitt, Dr. Cabral, comments?
Feedback for them.
It's good feedback for them?
It's good feedback for the principals because it's made up of a cross section of parents, teachers.
Right.
And community members.
Okay.
Um, okay, B E D B, agenda format. So, um, the edits that are in here are pursuant to legal counsel. And so I'll explain that. So if you go to the third paragraph, the third sentence, the problem with this sentence is that it says, however, if three members of the school committee request an item be placed on the agenda, the chairperson is obligated to do so. That can be seen as a violation of the open meeting law because now you have three school committee members discussing a potential agenda item that could be a potential vote outside of a publicly, outside of a public meeting. So she was very nervous about us having this in here. Um, and then, um, the other, in the last paragraph, I just changed the language because it's not necessarily three days prior to the meeting. We're getting materials. We're getting them as soon as possible. So that was just kind of how we're doing things. Um, but does anyone have any questions about the change in the language?
Um, I'm trying to figure out how to explain this. Sorry. Um, the.
Um, the, the three days prior piece of it. Um, I know we're getting them as soon as possible, but is it? Ideally, we would receive them at minimum three days prior.
Do you want it to say something like as, as soon as possible, but no later than three days prior? Is that what your concern is?
I think it should be something like, we'll strive for at minimum three days prior with the understanding that some materials may be refreshed. Like I, I think it's, I'm looking for something that acknowledges that, yes, some things come late, but we should be, we should be aiming and get eighty, ninety percent of materials ideally, you know, as we talked about, like the Friday beforehand. And then, yes, some things will get refreshed. They don't want it to be.
You're interpreting this, uh, see, I interpret the as early as possible as being before three days early, like five days. But so, okay, so maybe we could say as early as possible, but no later than three days prior. Except in.
I don't know. I think you guys know the spirit. Yeah, I mean, I, I think you know the spirit of what I was trying to say. All I was trying to say is that I recognize that some things comes in late, but I feel like if you leave it as early as possible, some of them are like, well, it wasn't possible. We'll do until the day before, so, but it's hard for us to be well-prepped to run an efficient, thoughtful meeting. Then we don't have the materials, so that's.
You could potentially do it like um, like it's worded for posting, um, except in unanticipated. I forget how it's worded if a posting, but maybe use that language. It has to do with unanticipated events.
Okay.
Yeah, the other thing I'd like to add in too, and Lynn and I had spoken about this, well, we, in one of our subcommittee meetings, like for example, she said she had a whole bunch of minutes ready to go out. So my thing was, can you send, say even just the, all those minutes out a week ahead or whenever they're ready?
And it piecemeal as opposed to waiting for the whole thing?
Yes.
Yep.
That's what I'm saying, and I know it probably stings being piecemeal, but at least you get a start on the stuff. And then as things go on, and yes, definitely, three days ahead is great, not, not great, it's good. It would be great if it was a week ahead, but, um, and there are things that we know that come out, that they just come out at the last minute, and so you're, you know, getting to it that day, so.
Okay, we can definitely work on the language for this. We have a meeting next week. We have nothing else to do, right Nancy?
Sorry, I wasn't trying to be nitpicking.
No, no, no. I completely understand what you're saying. We'll definitely work on the language. Policy B E D D, well, here's one of your exceptions, because I sent you all an email today with the most recent revision. I had revised this, policy subcommittee had made some changes, so I wanted to make sure you got the revisions. And, and let me explain why I'm even putting this in. So policy B E D D is a rules of order. It states that what governs our meetings are Robert's Rules of Order newly revised. They're always being revised, so whatever is the most recent. The M A S C sample policy is the same, except it, there's a, there's a caveat in it that says, if there's any additional rules of order a committee agrees upon, it should be part of this. So I added um, every time I print this out, I get the wrong one. Here it is. So weird. Okay, so I added, so number one, I added to say, members who wish to address the committee or ask a question should wait to be recognized by the chair. Members are asked to refrain from side conversations during meetings. This is just kind of a way to try to keep us organized from inadvertently cutting each other off. Just, I mean, it's just kind of a procedural. Number two, I added because, well, for a couple of reasons. First, we do need to be aware that if you're using a device during a public meeting, it is subject to a public records request. So, I mean, there are exceptions to what can be um, revealed, but if you are on your phone and somebody outside is texting you about something in the meeting, somebody could request to see that. The other reason I added this is that, you know, we have this public comment period, and I feel like sometimes people who are friends or, you know, that we know, are gonna text us during the meeting, like, can you ask this? Can you ask this? And I, I get that they are doing that, but it's, it's kind of unfair to everyone else who goes through public comment. They're getting a shortcut. So I think that it's important that um, we just recognize that we shouldn't be taking texts or emails coming to us during the meeting. And I, I, I just really wanna make sure you realize that anything that is in view on the table, being used in a meeting, is subject to a public records request. Cause not everyone knows that, so just wanted to make sure you know about that. The voting procedure, the reason I added this, and I'll read it, because I don't know, every, like I said, every time I print out, I get a different version. But um, the reason I added that was that our, our, the voting procedure we usually use is not exactly how it's in Robert's rules. But it's what we have been doing for as long as I've been on the committee. It's, and it's how the other boards do it. And I think it makes more sense to do it this way. Because I feel like if you ask your questions, and then somebody makes a motion, and then you have your discussion, and then you vote, you know, your, your motion can change depending on the content of your discussion. Like a motion that you might be ready to make before the discussion might be different, or even worded different, than the motion you would make after the discussion. And so I feel like it streams, streamlined the process a little more for us to continue the way we're doing it, which is, a topic is brought up, we ask our questions, we make our comments, we have our discussions, and then a motion and a vote happens. So I just wanted to go over that with you. I also wanted to let you know, I will be working on school committee protocols and norms, which don't need to be part of our policy manual. But I've noticed in other school committee pages in other districts, many of them post their protocols and norms on their websites. And so I think that'll be a good thing for us to have and for us to be able to post on the district website. Um, I'm also gonna kind of prepare a Robert's Rules of Order summary that are most relevant to our meetings. Jim kind of went through this and put together a really useful document. I'm gonna use that as a basis, so that's future meetings. But anyway, getting back to this policy, B E D D, let me just read you the final paragraph, and then you guys can let me know your comments or questions. So voting procedure. After the chair introduces an agenda item and the relevant information is presented, the chair will open the floor for questions and comments from committee members. Once the discussion concludes for items requiring a committee vote, the chair will either make a motion or call for a motion. Once a motion is made, the chair will ask for a second. If no second is received, the motion is considered to have failed. If a second is made, the chair will call for a hand vote and announce the results. The vote will be conducted by roll call if any committee members are participating remotely and for any other reasons required by law. Kelly?
So um, it, it's on your earlier, I think the second paragraph reflects what we do. Um, on your earlier, there's like obviously some numbering things going on that I'm sure you're aware of. But on the, the members are reading from personal devices. I think your point is very valid on a reminder that messages are, could be read, uh, could be requested. Um, I think there's um, the one thing I, I, this way it's framed a little bit. It starts off with members should refrain from using personal technology, but we made a decision together to try to cut down on paper printed, given the copier situation. So now we're all bringing personal technology. I think that's what you were intending to say for reviewing existing materials, but it um, I feel like the language still feels like we're doing the wrong thing by using the personal technology. So I don't know if we wanna say like, members should remember that um, personal devices are to be used for reviewing um, meeting materials during the course of the meeting that all contact, you know, like something that just re-anchors in the fact that we're using those devices on purpose. I guess I, I feel like I switched, I went from paper to using the device very intentionally to tie it down on paper. So I don't know if we wanna say like, you know, members are using, members may be using personal devices to.
So maybe members should only?
Yeah, something like that.
Use personal technology during the meeting for reviewing material, meeting materials?
Yep.
Are in urgent circumstances?
Or urgent, personal, not like school committee related circumstances, right?
So, and, and this was my other comment. Yeah, I can, it was that, I mean, we all have stuff going on, whether it's work, or family, or home, or whatever. So my suggestion is that, you know, if there's something going on that you need to check on, please always feel free to ask for a recess. It is not a big deal. You can take a couple of minute recess. You can check on, make the phone call you need, make the text, the email, whatever you need to do. So please don't ever hesitate if there's something going on that you need to check on. Don't feel like you can't, or worry that you're doing it in a meeting and somebody's gonna try to get rid of it. Just ask for a recess and we will do that.
I think that's fair. I'm, I will acknowledge that if there's a, who's giving me a ride home from dance, like I have to answer it. But if it gets reported and up, like no one, there's nothing exciting that's gonna be, if somebody asks to see my texts, it's gonna be, you know, remember we switched and so and so's picking you up, walk outside the studio, you're gonna be alive. Like it's just, I, you know, those things happen, I wouldn't wanna call for a recess for that, right?
Okay.
Um, but to your point, if there's something sensitive that you don't wanna attempt to declare, then we can ask for a recess.
Does anyone?
I can't not mom for four hours. Like I, there is a reality of like, I can't not mom for four hours. I, I think, I, I think if it's, uh, if, if we do, in the event that we do get um, public records requests, our personal information.
No, there's limitations on what can be, there's definitely limitations on what can be requested or revealed. It's just, you have to go through that process of this was, this is what happened during, this is what came in during the school committee meeting. This is personal, and this is why it's personal, and this is why. It's just a process that you probably don't wanna have to go through. Even if it does get, you know, even if it isn't gonna be revealed. And I, I just know that we go through these um, cyclical times where we get a lot of records requests, and then maybe not so many. Or we get a lot of um, open meeting violation allegations, and then not so many. And it, it just, it just happens from time to time, and Mrs. Pruitt and Dr. Cabral can attest to that. And Nancy.
I, I think that's all very logical, and I understand what you're saying. I will not be able to do four hour meetings and not answer a text from a kid. Like it's just physically not gonna happen. Um, there's, there's just no way. Um, so, you know, or, or are you coming home before I go to bed is a reasonable text. So I would call that urgent. Um, you might not, but that's, that's my business. So like, it is what it is, if someone requests it, I have to share that. Um, but I um, I do, my sensitivity on that line was more around, um, I also thought that urgent circumstances should say personal for the reason of it could be perceived that getting a text related to the topic was urgent. And I think your point was incredibly important on do not get a text about something in the meeting and bring it into the meeting. Like that's not an appropriate way to engage. So someone could feel they were texting me an urgent question about something that Principal Kavanaugh presented, and yet to me, that is not something I would be answering in that moment, but I might answer my kitten. So like, that's where I just wanted to make sure that me.
No, I think that makes sense. Nance, what do you think?
Yes, that does make sense. And I, I don't know, Jackie, if it's come up yet or not. Um, when we talked about, oh, people, cause you said that some of the committees let people ask questions through the the, you know, through Zoom or whatever during a meeting. Has that come up yet?
No, I'm still, um, I just finished meeting with the chairs of the other board.
Okay.
So um, yeah, we haven't.
Do that, yeah.
We can discuss that at our next policy subcommittee meeting.
You know, so that even though they're not at the meeting, maybe they'll have a chance to speak, so then they wouldn't, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll, we'll definitely be talking about that.
That's coming.
That's coming. All right, great. So B E D G, so we'll do those revisions and get back to you. Yes, Jim?
Sorry, Jackie. I am temporarily going back to B E D B, the agenda format and the line. Maybe it doesn't need to be in our policies, but I feel like it might be worth outlining, whether in this school committee quick guidebook or something, how to get something added to the agenda, because I don't think you as the chair would do this, but I feel like there could be like future abuses of power, where maybe a chair never puts an agenda item on, like there, I feel like there does need to be some sort of mechanism to get something on the agenda if there's a chair that maybe doesn't. Whether it's in the open meeting, someone proposes a motion, or whatever that mechanism is that doesn't violate open meeting law, but I feel like it needs to be written somewhere.
Okay. We can definitely work on that language.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, okay, B E D G Minutes. So this was just, we just revised this very slightly to add um, whether it's in-person, hybrid, or remote, because that wasn't in the policy, because when this was written, there wasn't that option. So that's the only addition for this um, policy. Does anyone have any questions or comments about that? Okay. Um, B G D, School Committee Review of Procedures. So this isn't, there's no changes in here. I just thought this was, other than the title, it's minor. Um, I just thought it was a good FYI for, for everyone. I think what I'm gonna do um, is at some point, I'm gonna send you the whole Section B, because that's all on school committee. Once all the revisions and stuff are made, just so that you have it at your fingertips, you don't have to go on the website, look it up, that kind of thing. B G E, Policy Dissemination. Just some edits to reflect our current practice. We don't have policy manuals really anymore, everything's online, so we just wanted to reflect that in the policy. Questions or comments about that? Okay. Uh, B I A, New School Committee Orientation. Again, just really some minor edits. Um, again, because we're not sending copies of anything, so we just took all that language out. Questions, comments? Okay, um, do you guys have B B A A in your, in your file? I wasn't sure, because it wasn't on my list, so I just wasn't sure if you had it on. So whether you have it, or if you have it, it's just FYI. If you don't have it, you'll get it when I send you the whole policy. Yeah.
Jackie, I think it's.
No, go ahead, Jim.
I think it's under B B B A. If you open the PDF named B B B A, it's in there for some reason.
Okay. What's the written name? I'm sorry, this is hard to follow.
School Committee Member Authority.
And where did you think it was under, Jim?
I've been Ctrl F-ing in the policy in our, uh, for B B B, as Jackie says then, I Ctrl F.
I've been going by the name when she gets to the actual name. So where do, where do we think this is?
It's under uh, School Committee Member Qualification Oath of Office Files, B B B A and B B B B. In the, in our ten fifteen, twenty twenty-five folder.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So again, that's just FYI. Um, last policy on the agenda tonight, unless I'm forgetting anything, is C B I, Evaluation of the Superintendent. Um, we just added language because the evaluation tool we use is the DESI evaluation tool. So we just added that language to it. Questions or comments?
Can you just put DESI in the abbreviation?
Yep.
And only because, sorry, I should have been more clear. Because we say DESI a lot in meetings, and someone might not actually have translated those two concepts. And so you wrote it out here, but if we can also use the term we always use in meetings, just make sure that the person who's reading our policy knows what we're talking about.
That's very true. So um, really appreciate all of your time with all of this. I know it's a lot and a lot of extra time. Um, thank you, Mrs. Pruitt, for joining our little committee, our subcommittee. Um, so we had set aside um, a meeting on October twenty-eighth at five thirty remotely. Do you want to keep that and use it for more policy review? Would you want, do you, or do you want me to start rolling the policies into our very lengthy school committee meetings? Not that I'm pushing you one way or the other.
I know I'm probably the one that complains the most about. I know I'm probably the one that complains the most about these meetings, but I actually prefer them to have policies here. I think it's easier to um, to have it outside of the, of the, of the regular meeting.
Just, just so you know, at the next meeting, there'll be a couple of policies on it, um, just to kind of get them done. One of them, though, is the competency determination, which is a new policy, which we really need to, it's, it, that's kind of a policy that should be at a full school committee meeting so that it's, the public might be a little more willing to watch that. But are we good with October twenty eighth at five thirty for another policy meeting?
Yes, I think ideally we would target a time on these, like, we do policies for an hour.
Okay, you can definitely do that. So um, I know we had a little, a little trouble getting started today, but so do you wanna schedule an hour, hour and a half? What do you, again, I'm, I just wanna get this done, so I will go along. So just tell me what you guys feel free, what you feel comfortable with.
I'm buying this longer. Ninety minutes, but I defer to everyone else.
Kelly, Lauren, Mr. Pruitt, Dr. Cabral, Nancy. Lynn?
Um, I'm sorry, you said the twenty eighth?
Yeah, five thirty.
Um, I cannot join at five thirty. I could join later, but um.
As long as we have, unless you're um, wanna be there for everything, you can just join whenever you can join, as long as we have three of us to, to go forward on it.
I can't make it for that. I don't think that keeps you from meeting, of course, especially if you can be there.
Now, I will be there and I, I agree, I, I'm with you, Jackie. Let's get it over with, because then we don't have to keep adding meetings.
And just so you know, the policy subcommittee has gone over everything except section G. We obviously have, you know, some revisions to do on some of the policy. There, there are a group that are still with administrators, and there's a group that's still with legal. So um, but, you know, we've really made a lot of really great progress, so thank you all very much.
And I think the G is the staff.
Christine is gonna have to go through a lot of that, yeah.
Going to go through a lot of that, yep.
All right, great. So I will take a motion to adjourn.
So move Loomis.
Second?
Second to Hamilton.
Roll call vote?
Hamilton, yes.
Pursue yours. Loomis, yes.
Wiseman, yes. Thank you all very, very much. Have a great night.
Thank you.
Good job.